Good afternoon, everyone. We're in the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday meeting. Halston's Law and Peace to Oklahoma, way on way off. Welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. There is an agenda in front of the committee. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Second by Council Kent. All those in favor? Post it any motion varies. First up, we have two delegations. Our first delegation is Ally and Bing from Wood Fiber L and G. But before I go to you, I'm just going to ask Neil just to outline for council the process of how we do leases, just sort of general process. So we understand where this fits into the context of that.
I have a handout in. If you'd like, I can put up a hook slide just to show the process or it's up to you?
You know, maybe that'll help everyone see it if you put it up on the screen. Sorry. I just thought we could have that info.
Yeah, you can handle it.
You're the speaker. How this has come off.
Is this a part of your...
No, not yet, not yet. It's still a process.
A slideshow?
Okay, there we go. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So where we are today is step two of our typical lease and license process. That's been sort of developed over the last few years. So we have received an expression of interest from W L and G to utilize some district property down at the Darryl Bay area. It came in the form of an application that was received by Real Estate Services. Step number two in the process before staff really engage and work on a file is for the applicant to come to council and present their proposed interest. The idea there is for the council to have an opportunity to hear it, provide some feedback to staff. If there's any concerns, staff can hear that from council right up front before we invest a lot of time and energy into it. So that's where we are right now. And then after that's over with, then we will go away. And if council wants us to proceed and embark and explore further, then we go through a process where we reach out to state potential stakeholders, community if necessary, depending on the file. Once we've received that feedback and done some staff analysis, but done some due diligence, we would come back to council and present the findings. And then council would give us direction at that point as to how they wanted us to proceed with negotiations. And then steps five and seven would be moving through to concluding a deal, depending on if we were able to reach a deal going forward. So the steps in red that are outlined there are ones where council's involved. And the steps in sort of the greeny, light green color where we reach out to the community and advertise to community.
And just to clarify, we put out an expression of interest, how long ago?
Probably over a year and a half ago now.
A year, two years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
And there were four different entities that sort of expressed interest in pockets of this whole Darryl Bay...
Correct.
...Pohawanny entrances.
Yeah, yeah. We've received interest from Shannon Springs Development, from W L and G, C S Guy Gondla has to continue, who's leasing or licensing land there, continues to have an interest there. We did receive actually a host of other ones as well for more recreation based on the water. And so through, you know, over the last year and a half, what's transpired is we've, what we were working on, we were working on a real estate strategy. So we really didn't want to get too far down the road until we knew whether we had any operational needs there. We concluded with the strategy that we presented recently that we didn't have any immediate operational needs in that area. So that kind of opened the door up in there moving forward. You know, there were some land ownership issues we had to resolve down there. We wanted to make sure we knew who owned what between the district and the province. There were old highway plans that needed to be sorted out. So we had to make sure we were working with proper information. So that's kind of led us to where we are here today.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thanks. Any questions for council in terms of the process? I just wanted to make sure it's clear where we, what the process is.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, the process is fine. You know, I just think even the Darryl Bay area was built before.
Well, we're going to have the presentation of the delegation. This is just so that council knows where in the lease process we are.
I seem to recall that we asked all the proponents who came forward with expressions of interest to work together to see if there was a way that everyone could share that space. And I just wondered where those discussions are.
And maybe the delegation can answer that to a bit from their perspective. But Neil, do you know if, were there discussions?
Well, once, as I said, going back a year and change ago, once we got into the ownership issues and the real estate strategy, we decided to sort of park everything temporarily until we saw where the future was going. And then once we started to reengage last fall, late last year, we first, we felt that the first group to hear from was the Shannon Springs, given the long-term potential interest there of the development. So Shannon Springs came in last year and did a presentation to council. And then once that was done, then we have now engaged with W L and G. At the time, there was a meeting about a year or so ago between all the interested parties. And it became clear at that meeting that there likely wasn't going to be a solution that everybody could fit together down there. So that's why we now are having the applicants come in who took the presentations and come here from W L and G today.
Ten, two.
Actually, Shannon Springs came in last week.
Again.
Again, again.
And so we asked the questions. Were you there? Were you not there? About the collaborative meetings. How much happened?
I think Shannon and Gondla have had some meetings. So just looking at this map, is there, are any of the proponents, any of the proponents are utilizing the space right now?
So, Chief Mayor, what I can do is perhaps if we can park that and let the delegation present. And then I've got a map as well that I can lay up at the end that identifies, you know, where to go on with operating now, where Shannon Springs is interested in, where W L and G is interested, so that we can understand the lay of the land.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Over to you when you're ready.
Thanks, Neil. Thanks, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having us here again, again, on the traditional territories of the Squamish Nation. We haven't been in front of council probably for over a year. I think the last time we were here was a similar committee in the whole. So we're glad to be back. We're here focused very much specifically on this particular issue. My staff and your staff have been working collaboratively over the past while. And per your process, we're here to give you a more formal presentation about what we have to. So this is...
A slideshow.
Okay, sorry. It's a slideshow.
Just a tiny bit of a heads up. We do have a second delegation and a staff member that has a timing issue. So depending on where the conversation is, we might quickly suspend this conversation and deal with the other agenda item and then bring it back. Do you want to pull your USB out? Is that okay?
Okay, I got it. Okay, so we tried to outline specifically why we think we're here. Obviously, we'd like to lease Darryl Bay for a particular period of time. We're going to discuss what we want to use it for, how we may work with other stakeholders and your staff for our short-term use, and how we may leave Darryl Bay in a better condition when we don't, if we would like to present to you. So my staff threw together a little background. This was education to me as much as anybody else. So of course, we're in Squamish Nation territory. George Vancouver camped there in 1792. It's got a lot of history, and it's named after the son of one of the former site owners. It was also, it was called Shannon Bay for a while after William Shannon landed there. And of course, the land was used for relief work camp. People worked in the Sea of Sky when it was originally built. And then it was most recently used, most heavily, as a transportation hub for the wood fiber pulp mill for many decades. So it's got a long history of use. This is a drone shot. I don't know how easy that is to see on that screen. This is a drone shot we took of the site just recently, just to give everybody a perspective of what we're talking about here. And then we took some pictures about current use, where it is today, what's there today. Obviously, the ferry terminal for MOTI is there. It's in a bit of a, a little bit of a standard disrepair. There's a lot of, you know, a bit of residue. And we did a shoreline cleanup there once a couple of years ago, and a few things are laying about. Needs some work. That's the ferry. That's cigarette stop, I guess, next to the curb. Just some invasive species there, some part-time residents, I suppose. That guy's got his chair out there, using it a little bit. That boat's been there for a little while. And then, of course, the rail crossing is not, is not at the proper grade and not to standard right now. I just know from work I've done in another organization that getting a rail crossing to grade is a fairly, can be an expensive proposition. I think my friends in Port Edward and Stolby that can cost up to a quarter million. I could be wrong. So understanding of zoning, it isn't industrially zoned. Water lot lease and the dock in a strip of land, and I have some maps here, are in the jurisdiction of the province. The primary purpose from Ministry of Transportation, as I go to my next slide here, is emergency dock for B C ferries if there's a landslide or what have you, that they can get down to Porter Cove all the way down to Horseshoe Bay. The upper lots are used for seasonal overflow for Sea of Sky Gondla and Shannon Falls. You see that a fair bit, people crossing the road there. And then there's, of course, there's road access for the resident. It has some private property on the little spit there. There is some limited recreational use, we see. What we're talking about is a short-term use. We don't foresee use over the longer period of time. And let me just talk specifically about what we're, what we are interested in. So the red dots here are part of the parking lot we're not interested in. Those are not really necessary to what we're contemplating. The yellow pieces at the bottom, that's really what we're after. We've got a better shot here that kind of visualizes it a little better. So again, that's the shot I showed you before. And so as you see, the yellow circle, anything above that, we're not, which is basically the north side of the rail tracks, we're not interested in. What we are interested in is that south. And I'll show a map shortly that shows who the various property owners and what we're proposing. But what we're after is a transportation hub. This is just for construction. When I say transportation hub, I don't mean, it's not a lay-down yard. It's not for materials. Those will either come from wherever they're produced, or up from North Vancouver, or Tilbury, and those sorts of places. We don't expect any real materials to come through here, just people. There could be, because we're talking small people moving craft, there could be foodstuffs or, you know, small items that you could carry onto a boat. There's no major items, steel or pipe or equipment that would come through this site. This is purely a person-moving facility we're interested in. So here's some, just more of a detailed description. We're looking for a transit point for construction and engineering personnel. And that's why we say it's short-term, because it's only for the period of construction. Folks will arrive primarily by bus, but there may be some personal vehicles depending on the personnel. They'll put on, be put on crew boats or passenger ferry service that we'll be operating, or a contractor, and they'll be transported to site. So when I say occasional transportation and equipment materials, this would not be anything substantial, because there really isn't a space for proper laydown. And the cost of bringing materials up to Squamish and then taking them over the site doesn't really make any sense. So I'm thinking more small-scale materials that may be needed on a short-term basis, or again, food, that sort of thing for the canteen. And we're looking at a period of four years beginning this fall. So our short-term use plan, we'll take some serious things into consideration, obviously. We'll work with the other stakeholders and the municipality for a site management and traffic control plan. And of course, we would take a strong interest in a safety and security plan, including the necessary insurance to make sure that everybody's protected and safe. So just get into the detail here. We can leave this up for a little bit, not to scale.
Ally, do you have an extra one? We're missing one. Can you get something else?
Sorry. Yeah, so this is not to scale. This is kind of a rough of what we're talking about here. The green bits are the buses. So there's 15 or 16 buses there, based on, you know, we've talked in the past about at height of construction, approximately 600 people. That should be sufficient to move them. So the buses would come down that red dotted line, turn around, park, and park. In addition, trying to make sure that everybody's taken care of. On the north, at the top of the picture, you see blue, that's to make sure that the resident has unrestricted access. The purple part, which is near the residence access, is parked for security and boat crews. So those would be smaller vehicles. The yellow pieces are basically owned by Ministry of Transportation. So they own the part down the middle, but they also own those pieces. That's where there's that sort of somewhat derelict building. We're thinking of maybe a security trailer, washrooms in that area. And then to the south, the yellow piece as well, we're going to have container terminal, sorry, a container truck type facility that's temporarily going to be taken away later. It has a turnstile in it, so we can check staff as they go on, check, because we're going to have, obviously, controlling the site for electrostatic charge type issues. It could be, you know, making sure that people are not transporting, you know, drugs or alcohol to the site, those kinds of things. So there'll be a check-in, making sure staff are on site at the right time. And then the white blue to the left is what, this is what we would build, and this would be a legacy beast, is a crew boat dock. This, again, these are boats, we don't have a specific size worked out that would take, but they're not large, 40 or 50 people at a time perhaps, they would park at this dock. We won't be using the existing ferry ramp, because that's, of course, for emergency purposes for Ministry of Transportation. Pedestrian walkway. And then, of course, we just point out some of the, some of the things that are there besides the rail crossing. So again, we're just talking south of the rail crossing here to the right of that. So we think we've covered most of what we anticipate to be there.
Yeah, just a question for the delegation.
Yeah, you said that the yellow pieces were controlled by the province. Does that include the one that's at the head of the dock?
Yeah, I think it goes across. I think Neil, your map shows it. Right across the, right across the four shores MOT. And they've got a little bit of that dog leg up there at the top for some reason.
It's a, it's a dog's breakfast, the whole thing. But Neil can read sort of those.
A sandwich with different meats and cheeses. So there's lots of, lots of different owners. I can bring the slide back up a few minutes. I'll be further. So our intention is to leave things better after we're done. It'll get into more detail on that. But what we're talking about, so we will repave that piece. We can reconfigure the parking lot when we leave, so that you can fit more vehicles in, just by having the proper lines in the right place and it being properly paved. We'll upgrade the rail crossing, so it'll be a proper level crossing. We could improve lighting in that area, again, depending on discussions with the community and other stakeholders. And this was just brought to my attention by our folks, there could be improvements to power, water supply. Again, if there's an interest and there's, everybody wants to cooperate. So for example, maybe we wouldn't be able to run power to that building and refurbish it, and it could maybe be reopened as a, I don't want to promise, but look at it maybe for toilets or what have you, right? So these are some of the things. The top three things for sure. The bottom two things, we're working with other stakeholders and yourselves, should you wish to. So we have some clear objectives as well, to make sure we're taking care of everyone else. The private property owner will have unimpeded access. We will have a safety culture at site to make sure that, because we're having buses and people are transported at certain times a day, so we will have safety and security there. And our intention is to leave it in a better condition than what we found it. We think these are consistent with some of your community objectives. So we went back and looked at some of your documentation. And here's your official community plan and your economic development plan, and then highlighting is mine. So for example, you want to promote some marine-based recreational opportunities. You want to develop incremental marine transportation infrastructure for future industrial recreational interests. These are some of the things you're after. And so we're looking at what we can leave behind to make sure we're consistent with your plans. And then, as was mentioned before by Neil, there was an expression of interest some time ago. We responded to that expression of interest. And as it says there, you're looking for people who can enhance the services, improve the refinance return to the district and support job creation. And we think we're consistent with those things. So our next step, and this is our, I guess, our ask here today, is to help us, allow us to continue to work with district staff to appraise the land for value, so you get a fair price for your land. Continue to work with Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure, who will still have to operate their facility, so make sure that we're not impeding their use. And obviously, consult with other stakeholders, as we suggested earlier. Now, this is a little bit more sort of visionary, me thinking and my team thinking, in order to leave a benefit behind. What we're, what we're seeing, I guess, you know, the more I thought about it with Stowamas, with Shannon Falls, with Sea of Sky Gondla, Darryl Bay, and some other potential developments from the folks at Pohawanny and what have you, is you're almost seeing a bit of a nexus for a cluster of tourism opportunities, right? They're all there. People are parking here and there. Maybe there's an opportunity, and this is really your decision and what your vision might be, is to use what you have there as a nexus, not just simply for parking, but a nexus for a number of recreational opportunities once we're gone. So I'm going to show my, so we had an artist rendering of what it might look like when we're done. We had somebody produce this, a company in Vancouver. And so this is, again, taking the drone shot and adding, this is what you might be left with when we're done. So that, you know, the ferry's still of access. That dock is left behind for your use. As you see above, some improvements in terms of the parking layout, the level crossing for the rail. And again, some of this is MOTI land, so they would have to be part of that. But again, a center point for people that are trying to access recreational use, whether it's for this new dock or some of the existing infrastructure that's, or existing tourist infrastructure that you already have. And let me just conclude with a final shot, just as just a little different angle. And it gives you a sense of how the parking lot may be configured. Again, this is up for consultation. This is just a vision. But you've got better, better controlled parking, you know, lines, so there's more usage, you know, possibly food trucks, that sort of thing, putting a bike lane. And again, we're only talking about up to the railway, and not interfering with any use above that. So this is how we may be able to leave it behind for you after four years. So our proposal and our desire to continue working with your staff on is, let's see what's a fair price for it. Obviously, it's something we're very interested. Our use is temporary, and we believe when we leave, when we go, we can meet your community objectives and leave something better behind than you have now. That's my presentation.
Awesome. Neil, do you have anything before we ask some questions, or should we ask some questions?
Not specifically about this. If you, ideas if they're on, if you have a slide that shows where it uses.
Why don't we go, if we have questions and they start trending towards the information, we'll go there. Council Kent.
I have a question for you, Neil. So they're saying that they would like to have this available after 2018. So how does that fit in with our timeline and the lease process that we have in front of us here for council?
In terms of...
In terms of being able to get through our own processes to accommodate that timeline? If plausible?
Maybe what, maybe what'll have this, we'll just park that question. We'll get Neil to answer. We'll sort of collect a bunch of questions for Neil. But if people have questions for the delegates, the delegation, we'll just...
I'm just wondering about the current lease. I'm just wondering about the current lease and leases, the current...
I think the only lease we have is with Gondla currently, and it's for the upper parking lot.
So who manages the worst place right now?
It's unmanaged. Yeah.
How about the...
Why don't we, we'll park that question for Neil, too. I have a question, Bing. You hope to lease it for four years, potentially up to 600 employees.
At peak.
At peak. What's that trajectory in terms of when is peak and when does it start to slow down?
We haven't received our final EPC offer, which would include a much more detailed construction schedule, which we're waiting for with bated breath. But if we assume, we're looking for access for basically some teardown, wouldn't be heavy construction. The early stages of construction, actually, a lot of it doesn't take here. It's in assembly yards and fabrication shops. So you're probably looking at your most intense usage, let's say, 2020, 2021. I don't want to be any more specific than that.
So a year, two and a half, three?
Yeah, you'll start to get into more intense usage.
And maybe you can just quickly speak to the sole, the sole use, essentially exclusive use to that area?
Yeah, so what we want, we want to, we want to be able to control it for a safe environment. Now, we've talked about, I sort of asked my folks, does that mean we fence it? That's kind of up to you, right? Do we want 24-hour security? Because we wouldn't have the buses there at night. That's kind of up to you. That's something we'd be willing to work with the community on if they felt that 24-hour security was necessary. We want to have security there during the day, because the buses are there and people may leave articles and what have you, vehicles. So we want to have that protected, and of course, there's an access point. So we would probably want to have somebody just as a night watchman type thing looking over the infrastructure at night. But the depth of that security, I think, is part of the discussion. But we're only going to use it in the day. We're going to bring the buses in the morning and leave at night. This is not a 24-hour operation. This is, this is a day shift.
So this is a day shift predominantly during the work week?
Yeah, just the work week. Now, I can't say that, you know, individuals, so we're not talking about buses, so, you know, foreman or what have you, or some of our people have to get out there, they come up their own vehicle, leave it there, and they take a crew boat out. There'll be some intermittent. But the concept is that it's a five-day work week. Construction crews come from wherever their parking rides are, get on their buses, they arrive here, they get on the boat, they go out, and the buses just sit there all day, and then they come back and get it and go. So there's, there's noise and disruption at those two periods of time during the day. But there's, it should be, other than that, it should be intermittent and small scale.
Council Kent.
You said you hope to have some consultation with the stakeholders, but as you essentially want singular use of it, I'm wondering what that might look like?
Well, obviously, we've talked a little about what's left behind, but my understanding is the other stakeholders, and I've talked informally to the folks at the Gondla, is that they have peak usage periods, right? There are really a few weekends, possibly some weekdays in the summer, they have some peak usage periods. And if we had a better sense, because they, they've been operating for a few years now, they have some data, better sense of those, you know, whether it's long weekends or those kinds of things, we can probably work with them to make sure that we're not impinging on one another. The upper area, again, is not, you know, it's sort of random parking. I mean, they do have a parking attendant there, but there's not, it probably hasn't been optimized for best use. And again, it'd be something we could do to make sure that as we, as we borrow the bottom spots, that maybe the upper spots could be increased, that could be better usage. But it's really a conversation to make sure everybody's satisfied. And, you know, and what we don't know is what the other sites, so for example, Shannon Falls, we really don't, because we do see people crossing the road, and that's anecdotal. But what is, Shannon Falls also having some overflow, and are they using the spot as well? So I think it kind of would require us to get together. I don't know if Shannon Falls has any data. I know the Gondla people will know when their peak weekends are, and I think we could work together on that.
We have, we have data. Karen and then Kent.
I'm just trying to understand the exclusive use part. If you just have buses arriving in the morning and then leaving at night, why can't other people use the dock during the day for those four years?
Because we would basically take up all the, all the spots. And that dock is, at that time, during our construction, is our, is our dock with our vessels. For those, after, we're going to build this dock for our exclusive use for those periods of time. To open it up to the public, I think it creates some liability and risk issues for us.
But what would be there during the day?
The buses.
But if I wanted to just park and walk to the buses and walk down with my paddleboard and...
You could. I mean, it's, this is, that's Ministry of Transportation land. And that's why I said, let's, we could talk...
Onto that dock.
Not, not onto my dock, sorry.
But, could I land my boat there?
Probably not, no.
So can you explain why that's important to you?
Because, because during that period of time, I own the dock, and I have liability issues, and my vessels, and my buses, and my staff will be there. So the idea of shared use during that period for that piece of infrastructure is not something we think we can do. We think it puts us in a liability situation.
One of the other uses that was proposed in this area was a boat ramp, like a launch point where people were boated. So I see your improvements don't suggest that. Is there still room for a boat ramp there?
I asked, because the mayor, you raised that, we talked informally some time ago. That's an Ministry of Transportation decision, because that's their land. If they, if they agree to that, it wouldn't be a difficult piece of infrastructure for us to leave behind, too. But it's really MOTI's call, because that front bit, basically where the trees are Because that front bit, basically where the trees are there and then the rocks, that's province land. And I don't know what their issues would be.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was asking about the boat ramp too, and that little beach there is not part of this.
No, that's private land.
So then, we did talk to the parking, the Gondola and those guys who are there. And the parking problem out there is really, the park? Anyway. And then the buses, so like, hopefully there'd be a bunch of people from Stewamis working there, so I guess that would be the cars. And the buses, are we coming up in Vancouver?
Essentially, there'd be parking rides from the south. I mean, if there was sufficient employees to the north, St. Pemberton, then we would run one from there. Even for local residents, we would prefer a park and pickup, because parking would put pressure on the parking there generally. And it's just part, it's helpful for control of access. But again, you know, if there's, if there's, all our employees wanted to park, who are local, as long as people wanted to park there, we have a problem. If it was a small number, we could probably accommodate them.
Well, I can understand having to have the dock yourself, but there is room for two docks, so that might be something to think about. Yeah, I guess that's about it, everybody else has asked the other stuff. And something that we talked about before, it was actually Counselor Race brought it up, was the area really does need some kind of master planning. Obviously not right now with the potential four-year lease on it. There's a lot of different parts there. And I'm happy to hear as well the bases being all removed, of course. But yeah, look forward to seeing what progress.
I'm wondering, have you done any sort of overview of a traffic study, considering what 16 buses might look like in and out of that site on a daily basis? The reason I say that before you begin is because we had the Kohani development folks in the other day with some fairly startling videos and some fairly high numbers of near accidents, U-turns, the litany of almost disastrous effects. So I'm curious to know what it might look like, maybe 16 buses in and out of that site every day?
Yeah, and I don't have a quick answer for you. The primary answer is, we would work with the community on both a traffic management plan and a safety plan. And that might include some additional infrastructure or might include simply some personnel at certain times of the day. Because it really is that one time of the day, and I had the same question. If you're backing up, you know, 10 buses on that highway, I mean, it is the morning, but it could be an issue. So we recognize it's an issue. I don't have a quick answer for you, but I believe that a traffic management plan and a security plan could probably address those things to everybody's benefit. And maybe it would require some infrastructure improvements. You know, we'd work with MOTI on that for sure.
Counselor Spoh. Are you currently utilizing the land?
No, no.
I'm still interested in, I guess it's a Neil question?
Yep, we'll get, I'll just ask one more question, then we'll get Neil. Just, it sounds like you have most of your security, electrostatic, blah blah, all that stuff here. Why not at the receiving end at Wood Fiber?
We really don't want the problem to be, once they get to site, we have to put somebody on a boat and send them back. Or they bring something over that they're not supposed to. That's, it's a good access point, right? It's a good control point before you get on the vessel.
Neil, maybe we'll just show us some, maybe a site and if you have it of the area ownership issues and people, it's my question. And if there are any current existing leases or interests.
Hopefully you can see that. So we've got, what we've done here is we're identifying the existing areas the Gondola is licensing from the district. They're in orange. It includes the area, areas shown up there as A, D, B, and a portion of the C, the top half of the C. Those are the areas that have been under license with Gondola for several years now. The area, and they have, their agreement hasn't been extended long-term yet. We wanted to see if, again, if we had any operational needs, come in with a real estate strategy, and also then get into this broader discussion about Darryl Bay. So they're on a year-to-year type contract right now. They have expressed interest along the way, obviously, and I think you probably heard that the other day, that they like to be there longer if they could, given the challenges they're seeing with parking. But right now, they're on a year-to-year. So the area in light blue is the area of interest that's been expressed by the Shannon Springs Development. They were in, last year presented to council their interests. Council directed staff to go away and explore that potential arrangement with them yet. Nothing's been concluded yet. We will be bringing something to council probably in the next month or so on what a potential agreement could look like for areas A and D for the Shannon Springs Development. They are saying at this point, they don't believe they're going to need access to A and D probably until late 2019. Any agreement with them?
A and D.
A and D, yeah, yeah. Any agreement with them would be potential, would be conditional upon them getting a development permit. So I'm not sure how long that's going to take. But just a rough guess right now would be probably not until the end of 2019 or late 2019. Then the area in red at the bottom is the area that WLNG has expressed interest in. And what we're hearing from them is four years, beginning in 2019. Late this year, yeah, early next year, or better, or late this year. So that would be four years running 2019, 2020, 21, and 22. So that sort of shows the lay of land. The only existing agreement right now is with Gondola on the areas in orange.
And the Crown, various entities of the Crown own any of the other lots we might see in there?
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Obviously, Darryl Bay Road snakes down from Highway 99 and goes south in the railway line. But the areas south of C, between lots C and the water to the, what's looking on the left on that where the dock is, is owned by the MOTI. And the area on the west side of Darryl Bay Road, near the private residence above the area in C, that's there, that's MOTI land as well, which they've identified in their interest. The map they showed earlier of being of interest to them as well. So this just shows that district properties does not show in highlighted, not the MOTI exist. That's not our concern at this point.
And just to give, the analysis we had last week from Fund and Associates for the Kohani group showed that, yes, the bond was used, parking there, about 13% of the parking, most of the parking was coming from people using Shannon Falls into that area. I have questions for Neil.
So sorry, if I understood your question, you're just curious to know whether we have staff have the capacity to process this request in the timeframe?
Exactly whether, if they're 2018 of October, October 2018, they'd be able to allow our process, considering especially the stakeholder community feedback piece, which could be fairly extensive, I think, given the topic.
Well, I mean, I sit here and we always say yes, that we'd like to be able to meet that objective that's several months away. So I think what we could say is that we can shoot an target for that. And if for some reason we feel there's any challenges of meeting that objective, we would get back into council. We'd give council a heads up on that.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you know, to Neil, you know, when we're doing all this research in there, I think it's important to gather the information potentially for a boat ramp. Whoever's doing their homework on it and supplying you with the information, we should, you know, get an idea what a ramp for a whole could cost down there. Could go on the other side of the dock, or whatever. I think that's super important. And I do see that, you know, there will need be some collaboration between the other people that use the parking. But based on our meeting that we had with them last week, I mean, that's not going to be figured out by October. All those different players trying to go, well, I want some parking. But what I heard loud and clear in that is the Gondola only had five or six days a year that they really needed the space. So those were, those were long weekends, specific times that they've got documented. So if anyone's going to try and hammer out a lease here, at least we know when those joint parking's going to have to be, potentially. And, you know, I think the lease, you know, I think the lease has to happen on the timeline that you have. It should, we should make it happen as far as, you know, Pete's point about public consultation. That dock has serviced that industrial site since it was built. So public consultation, yes, but this is a four-year lease. Anyway.
Thanks. So I'm looking at the sharp point of C, which overlaps with the Gondola current lease, or is a proposed lease, because I'm wondering if the two can coexist. And I look at the map, this one, it was put up by the proponent, and it seems that the buses kind of stop there, but they have parking there. Is it possible to have Gondola parking right at that sharp point as well as accommodate this proposal? Or, I mean, is that lease, it says current, but proposed 2019 to 2024, so...
So through, the area in orange that is in block C is their current lease area. Let's put in brackets that what we've heard from the Gondola in the past is that they would like to continue beyond 2019. So that area in orange that you're referring to is the lease or license area that they currently occupy.
And that is committed until 2024?
No, that's just committed for this year. Because they're only on, they're only agreeing right now is just for this year.
But it would seem to me that, you know, this is not to scale. It would seem to me that if their primary usage is long weekends, that's not my primary usage with proper traffic control. You know, some individuals there that, there's probably a meeting in the middle that could be had. If we sit down and work with your staff, people could do it.
The parking consultation from Shannon Falls and Patrons Gondola.
It's mostly Shannon Falls, yeah.
Thanks, so I'm interested in, I assume that the Gondola has insurance, liability insurance. Who's managing site C, the C block right now?
Through you, Mayor. Right now it's not being managed. I mean, the Gondola has...
So it's ours?
It's ours, yeah.
And we pay all the insurance and liability and...
Yes, it's just part of our insurance, overall insurance.
Overall insurance, so we should, it's not being managed by anybody? Thank you.
The guy in the camera.
The guy in the camera.
No, it's not any roadway or public park. Within our insurance policy, it gets managed for our work plan.
I'm interested in like garbage bins, it looks like there's a ton of rubbish down there right now.
It can get a little ratty.
And through you, Mayor, we did hear the comments expressed last week by, I think it was Rick, with the Shannon Springs crew. So we heard that, and we've talked to him since, and so we're going to explore. And we probably will, obviously, if they're going to be occupying this, if that's where it ends up, that there will be some increased management of that area. Just a matter of how far we take it.
Yeah, and I'm sure everybody's looked in fine detail, the property lines up on that, right?
What happened for the last 10 months?
No, but I'm looking at C, just south of C. There's a little loop that comes around like that to that beach. And that's some kind of property line, so hopefully we'll, we obviously will survey. It'd be nice to know exactly where we're working with the inch.
Would a survey be part of this process?
It can be, yeah.
Counselor Ryan?
Neil, I'm just wondering if, because that report last week showed that most of the parking there is from Shannon Falls, but no one from the province is talking about their needs, and they're not really at the table. So who is responsible for picking up that conversation? So if we lease this land, we just create a bigger problem and more danger with that intersection and those people that are crossing the highway to get to the park. So at what point do we engage the problems?
Through you, Mayor, we will engage the problems right away. I mean, that was, it was a bit of an eye-opener last week, that presentation. And so our goal will be, if Council for X has moved forward, to come back at a later date and hopefully put together, it's not going to be a long-term plan, but just put together some current, up-to-date research and analysis on all the things that are happening in the Shannon Springs scenario, something that we're going to explore. Sorry, Shannon Falls is something we're going to explore as part of this.
I have a question. Ben, does WLNG have a backup plan should this lease not work out?
Yeah, I mean, our folks are charged with almost anything to look at to have a plan B. What that is, is much earlier stage than this. This is our preferred option. But if we'd have to go somewhere else, we'll look further down, further down the, the sound. Just, I might add, this is a little bit of a non sequitur, but when I was speaking to Natural Resources Canada about some of our issues, they have a fund that we can apply to. It's an infrastructure-type fund that industry can apply to, that possibly could be applicable in this instance to create more amenity. So I don't want to be over ambitious, but clearly the crossing of the highway is an issue. So there may be things we can work on together. Something that industry can apply, it's an industry fund, but maybe we can work together and explore that. It was mentioned unsolicited by Inner Camp to me.
I may have missed it, but I think you said you were Monday to Friday, Neil?
Yeah.
There would be nothing, no activity on the weekend?
I wouldn't say no activity, there won't be any buses, it could be individuals, you know, foremen, what have you. You know, those kinds of small-scale individual vehicles, that sort of thing.
And those buses would be coming up from the city, would they?
We will be creating parking rides for them wherever the bulk of the employees are coming from. So it could be like North Vancouver. If there were sufficient north of here to employees, then maybe we do one there. It sort of depends on the labor strategy and where we're actually picking up these employees, most likely from south to bust.
They may not all be northbound either.
Yeah.
Do you see any potential for some shared use? For example, if we plan for, put a boat ramp in there, an access to get to the boat ramp? We could use parking somewhere else, but...
I don't, I don't know. I think that's, because we're sort of at this stage, like, that we want to continue working with your staff to positively see that this is an option, that I think a real sit-down with MOTI about what their restrictions and demands are. I mean, they're okay with us putting our dock next, so I'm not sure what else.
Well, and that's a conversation we have with MOTI. I'm wondering, from your perspective, is, would it be something that is possible?
Yeah, I think it's something that's possible. Whether we could use it during our usage for those four years, I think I would be more hesitant to say yes. But certainly, if MOTI says that it can be done, then I don't see it as a large addition cost to me as late behind.
So your security issues are simply to go on to the dock that you're planning to build and not necessarily...
So people will run their boats and what have you, but that's a normal issue now, so I suppose.
That's just that driver's going to be the problem. Any other questions? Jason?
Neil, can you remind me, the Kohani proposal, were they contemplating us selling the sections A and D to them? Or, and what was the purpose of it? Was it during construction or was it part of the final project? I don't quite remember the presentation as well.
Through you, Mayor. So area D, sorry, yes, the first answer is they are looking to acquire ownership of the blue area, which is both parcels. Area D initially, sorry, alcohol area. Area A, they need to relocate hydro lines. So there's some hydro lines there, but they need to relocate the hydro lines as part of the project. So area A would be largely around that. And something we haven't even discussed yet would be whether or not there's a possibility to continue to use that for parking once the hydro lines are relocated. So these are the kind of details that we're going to dive into with council's direction. Area D is an area that would be initially used as an access and a potential staging area for construction on the site for the larger development area. And then ultimately will be landscaped and become part of the gateway to the project.
Yeah, because I just wondered if it was sort of just an opportunistic thing, where they said, oh, well, we've got this parking lot here. Because the Kohani site's a big site. So, you know, one would wonder if they might be able to rejig the plan a little bit to accommodate those needs. I did get a chance to watch the presentation around the transportation stuff, and I don't know, I mean, when... know, I mean, one can never read too much into things, but the sense that I got from the applicants was that it's probably going to take a few years until they're getting to pulling the trigger, kind of, okay, let's go, and then we know how long it takes to actually build out a very large project. So, also another question, do we know, does our proposed parks transit service go to this area? Do we know? I know that's probably not a question for Neil, but...
I thought it went, I thought it went to this, I think it goes to this area to turn around, to go back.
Yeah.
Because it has to come, and then it would stop the Gondola on the way back.
Interesting. Okay. Yeah, I'm just wondering what that might, might look like in terms of parking demand and also those kinds of things, and might reduce it somewhat. Wanted to just get myself on the record as the, as far as this boat ramp thing, I don't know if this is necessarily a good spot for a boat ramp, and I just reflect on the fact that you launch your boat, but then where do you park your trailer? And then, you know, how many trailers are you going to fit on there? And I don't know if that's necessarily the best fit. I, I'm a little bit more partial to the dock and seeing sort of the crossover between the type of visitor who might go to Shannon Falls experience, or the Kohani experience, and, you know, having that water access as well as for the public, recognizing that this will be served by transit, hopefully, in perpetuity. So, just wanted to put that out there. And in terms of consultation and timeline, my expectation for consultation and timeline would be that we would do the typical consultation timeline that we would do for a four-year lease of municipal property. I wouldn't expect more. I don't think it's inappropriate, just because it, you know, it involves a big, larger business that may or may not be controversial in the community. I think it's more of a actual use of the lease, and it is a temporary lease, so I would want it to be bogged down in extra process.
Councilor?
Yeah, thanks. Well, just to Jason's point about the dock, I just was looking for feasibility. I mean, I know that's a long way, but while there's going to be engineers down there, file drivers, and everybody down there, so we are clear property lines and feasibility for it. I'm not going to have to worry about that.
Except you might want to put boats in there.
No. Yeah, that's true.
Councilor, your voice?
Thank you. Well, it's an interesting comment, because I've been involved, just kind of offline with different people, about the possibility of a boat ramp down there, because the one that's presently down by the yacht club is, I think the light is starting to become clear at the end of the tunnel for its last days. It won't be there forever. I don't believe it's part of the future plans of the developer or owner of that site. And so, the question is, where might people launch boats? And I've seen other sites. I don't personally launch a boat that way. The difficulty I've seen with them is acquiring enough land for usually a large vehicle and a trailer, as opposed to just somebody's vehicle for just any other use. And I'm not sure, frankly, that that site works for that. And I, and I don't want to say we're deciding that this afternoon, but it may not be appropriate. But, but it's part, I think, of a larger discussion, because when we get a proponent that's prepared to leave something behind, then I think the question is, what might we want left behind? And I think it'd be important for us as a council to kind of create a bit of a vision for that area, ideally before we entered into any kind of agreement with them, although that's a relatively short timeline, if it goes according to schedule. But I think it'd be important for us to have a discussion about what might work there, what do we see there? Is it purely paddleboard kayak areas? You know, I know it's more suitable in that area than in other parts of the oceanfront, because it just happens to be less wind over on that side than there is right off the Nixon Beach for that, but it's just a bit more challenging for those things. So, so I think that's something we, as a council, have to kind of get our heads around. Traffic study was very informative for me, and I think for all of us, because it pointed out that the significant problem with that area, traffic-wise, is from Shannon Falls. That's where the biggest gap is between the number of parking spots, which is relatively small, and the actual daily usage they experience. And the Gondola and the chief parking lot, for example, seemed to, I recall the graphs, and the public probably didn't see this, but the peak use and the capacity is actually very close. There's a few cars here and there, but generally very close, and typically on weekends, as you would expect for a tourist area like that. So, so they're not so much the worry, but what the province is starting to think about, at least I got the sense of from that meeting, is restricting access to Shannon Falls, to that parking lot, and at some point just saying, that's it, you can't come in here, you can't try to come in here, and looking for other things like bus access and so forth, that makes a little bit more sense for the kinds of crowds. They also want to control the crowds, because you get too many people in there, and it's just not a good experience anymore. So, there's all those types of things that I think are more in the purview of the province. They've got jurisdiction, and they've got control of it, and they're going to have to kind of get their heads around it, as opposed to us, who think we're just going to sort of react to whatever solution they have. But that is a provincial issue. This issue, I think the important thing for us is to try and focus on what we think our vision might be for those little Cs there in the future, so we know what we'd like to see coming out of this thing, if this is, if this is going to be the route we go.
And certainly if, if we go down this route, for considering this, I would like to have some understanding of the viability of a boat ramp, a public boat ramp there, and whether or not it can accommodate trailers and cars, or what extent it can accommodate that, even if it's in the B, the B parking lot area, people can park their car and walk down. But because I know there was a citizen, I think he's moved out of town now, that looked at this quite a bit, and there are very few places where we have water access with parking. We certainly don't have it on the pencil, we don't have it in downtown. It's a mess at the current boat ramp, and I don't want to lose an opportunity to figure out if we can get this sooner rather than later. And I'm not thinking as an amenity at the end. I want to see if there's a synergistic opportunity there today, if it works or not. Like, I'm not saying it must go there, I just want to understand if it's viable, and if we can get something sooner rather than later through this process, if we look down this.
Yeah, I like that sentiment. And I'm just wondering about the property ownership. Is that all privately owned, for sure, on the other side?
Crowned.
Is it, so if that's crowned, why wouldn't we be looking at some synergistic applications as far as, and I know the other proponent that...
It's shallow.
Is it, but if we're doing paddleboard access?
Yeah.
Oh, for paddleboard and kayak access while it's going in, if it was possible to work with the crown, to maybe share parking in B and have some water access on the forshore there?
Yeah, it wouldn't be suitable for a boat ramp, but it's, because it's quite shallow in that bay?
But maybe we can separate them, because if a boat ramps motor access, then maybe we can separate the use with the crown to actually have some non-motorized paddleboard and kayak access, and the other side, I think the use is separated.
The only other thing, and this can be evaluated, but it's mud flat, so when the tide's out, it might be very hard to launch it in there.
Right, exactly.
Ted?
Yeah, I mean, to that point, you know, that's why it's really important to have a survey map, so we know what we got. And I, you know, I don't really want to complicate the lease too much with this, because when the hotel gets going up there, I mean, they've talked about redoing that whole bay for exactly that, and I don't know, do we want to bring all this stuff on before everybody gets going? I mean, you know, you can see the whole area is just going off now. Anyway.
Yep, I didn't actually acknowledge Ted, but go ahead.
I'm wondering about the DP again, and the AD. The DP can be sold, is that correct? The project can be sold with the DP?
It's not a DP, it's always...
When the, no, the A and D, when, if we're thinking, you know, this is probably enclosed.
Yeah, yeah, the conditions of sale.
Forward.
Yeah, the conditions of sale.
Because I don't want it, I don't want any land to be amalgamated with that project, and then have the possibility of an amalgamated land sale with project, because we haven't seen anything but it.
Council has discussed that, the conditions of that.
Exactly, but not just, I just want it to be not just DP, but I want shovel in the ground.
We do have lots of people in the audience. Is there anyone who has a question?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, come up to the podium, and just restrict it to questions, so we can just get clarification.
My name's John Smith. I'm not a fan of the...
Oh, don't touch the microphone, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Kelsey's having a stroke through the...
I looked at the zoning bylaw for Skomish this morning, and on all the data that I downloaded and I looked at, this area is actually zoned RE, which is resource, and would require a rezoning in order to have an industrial application, since the RE conditions do not allow for a dock.
But we, yeah, according to our mapping, it's zone I3, industrial, general industrial, which this would be allowed. But we can get quickly, the actual zoning is, is industrial.
Second question is, for a ramp in the water, I'm familiar with it, because I'm a resident of Ousant, there is a requirement for a water lot lease in order to put a ramp in the water, which is another complication, that would involve many parties, Department of Transport, Skomish First Nation, and the obviously fishing oceans. So, is a water lot lease contemplated, and if so, who would apply for it? The proponent or District of Skomish? And be responsible for it?
It's crowned, so the lease would be with the crown.
And they're not going to give it up?
No, yeah, no, but they'll lease it to you. It's their lease, it's the crown owns the lease on the water.
Third question was, this dock, for 16 buses between 500 and 600 people, how big is this ferry boat that's going to arrive in the middle of paddleboarders and kayaks? The Bowen Queen services Bowen Island from Horus Bay, is, services at most 400 passengers, and is 287 feet long.
Bing, what type of vessels would be coming to pick up your workers?
We haven't actually settled on the vessels, but we're looking at a series of smaller vessels, simply because they're easy to bring in, because we don't want to build similar infrastructure. We don't want to build a ferry dock on the other side of similar size to one.
So, you're not using a ferry dock?
We're not using a ferry dock.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have to adjust the infrastructure that's available, right? So, we're not building a new VC-style ferry-style dock. So, it's the taking advantage of what's available.
So, the length of your dock extension is based on how many vessels you may be bringing in at any point?
Yeah, but it hasn't, it hasn't been set, but we're not looking at a full-size ferry type, we have to build, the infrastructure requires, it's not something we want for temporary use.
Is it a boat that takes 30 people or 100 people?
I'll ask Peter if you know what stuff you have.
Sorry, come up, just join us at the table, Peter, if you can. Thanks. Just because the microphones can't pick up, I was...
Yeah, it would probably be a series of 40 to 60 foot crewboats, and we bash the workers over to the site, and that would also potentially mitigate some of the traffic impacts. In terms of the actual exact plans and execution strategies, those are still quite preliminary. But, you know, to Bing's point, we are looking at infrastructure that would be suitable to be left as a legacy for the community, and, you know, that militates against having, you know, to Bing's point, very large ferry vessels.
So, and just to clarify, is it 600 people at a time?
At peak, at peak, we'll be moving, we'll be trying to move as many people as we can of that 650. But again, this is something we ramp up, so, you know, you're always going to encounter things along the way. So, as we ramp up, we're starting with 100, I think we start with less than 100, we'll start to see some of the kinks in the...
At any given time, there may be 600 some odd people on site.
At the peak.
At the peak. You have, Owen, any more questions?
Yes. How would these boats, ferry or ferries be fueled? And is there any plans to store fuel on the site, which again would be in violation of zoning bylaws?
That's a good question.
I think that's part of the logistics plan that KBR would implement. I know that any fuel would probably be marine diesel, and then secondly, any fueling would be undertaken in full compliance with all regulations.
And that would likely happen, that'd be obviously something that would have to be considered as part of the lease, if they were bringing fueling trucks in?
Through, yeah, in terms of the lease, it's clearly spelled out how the property can be used as part of that, and any improvements thereupon, so I haven't heard in this today what any discussion about fuel storage, but that's something that would be contemplated on site, that's something that has to be clearly considered as part of a lease agreement.
Because, yeah, we don't have any marine fueling stations for any...
And we don't think we have the space, even if we wanted to put it there. This hasn't come up, because it's not been contemplated for this site. The only reason it has come into my head is I haven't figured out the vessels that are doing this site. So, my apologies, but I can get you, I will specifically ask about this.
Yeah, no, it's a good question, for sure.
So, the other thing, Mayor, is that, you know, the key driver is being alluded to or pointed out in earlier in the presentation, is the safety case. Safety, 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 and, you know, in addition to our own safety standards and safety rules, to be the full panoply of WCB rules and regulations.
And the last is, again, in what services would be expected of District of Skomish, particularly police, fire, ambulance, and the access, vis-à-vis having a fence and a security screen there, for a fire engine or ambulance getting to the dock to unload if some of you got hurt on the job?
Yeah, we have to keep the access open, because it is an emergency facility.
Yeah.
And we actually aren't contemplating fencing, that's something we would consider if it looked like something we all agree was the right thing.
Yeah, so there's no fencing around, proposed around the sea, it's just, you're just essentially gatekeeping the dock.
The dock, yeah.
And so, it would be written into the lease, all that stuff, and it gets service, fire, police, like any other lot?
And in terms of using it in services of the community, I mean, obviously, we have our own people, we'll have our own staff there. I mean, in the event of something extreme happen at that site, yes, we would be relying on communities, ambulance, or fire truck, if, you know, a car caught on fire or something like that. But we are taxpayers of this community, we pay $300,000 a year for the site as it is right now, so I don't think that's an unreasonable consideration for the likely event.
But we would probably want to have a strategy and a plan, but that is a word to consider. Thanks. Anyone else have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Chris, heading out in the Highlands. A few questions. You know, we know that, KBR was mentioning, they've got a bribery conviction from the US Department of Justice, over $400 million in fines. There's an open RCMP investigation, which as far as I know, involves Woodcifer, tax evasion, the auditor general...
So, Chris, I'm going to ask you, find it to the lease, thanks.
Okay. The auditor general found significant deficiencies at Reddy Terminals, well, VP of Woodcifer was the chair there. So, I'm wondering, as our district, for me, there's lots of red flags with this business and its associates. So, as we contemplate an agreement with these, with this group, what steps do we take to make sure that they're playing by the rules and doing what should be done? Because it seems to me that we don't have these red flags with the other proponents that are wanting to use that site, and so it seems that we maybe need an extra level of verification, validation, enforcement here, or to be ready to do that.
So, I guess the question's through to you, Neil. As this moves along, would that be part of what comes back to council within a lease agreement, or...
Well, through you, Mayor. Normally in our lease agreements, there's a clause in that it requires the tenant to fulfill all regulations, rules, governmental orders, all that type of stuff. So, normally how it works is if they're in convention of that, and technically at that point, they're in default, there's usually a period of time to rectify that. If it's not rectified, then the district can terminate the agreement at that point in time. That's sort of our standard thing. We haven't really moved beyond that in the past, but it's something we can explore as part of the lease.
Another question?
Yeah, a couple more. So, we, I think, you know, a couple times these chambers, I heard Bing, I heard, I think you requested an economic assessment from Woodcifer, and Bing promised it. That would presumably tell us, give us some better sense of this is a good idea or not. And I don't think we ever saw that, and I'm wondering, do we expect to see that from Woodcifer? Or, I think they'd also asked for funding to do it themselves, so it was more unbiased. Do we expect to get that, to have some incentive?
Yeah, I don't think, we, it was, there was a tax, a tax thing we were looking at doing. doing, and we still have not yet to started that process. But I don't think there was an economic development in one, it was a tax, it was a tax, a tax analysis.
There was a question about economic impacts assessment, but I take it that that's not in the...
I don't think that was ever...
It's part of our environmental assessment, the economic impacts.
Yeah, I don't think that was ever something the district actually, it was the tax thing that we were, we had talked about as a council. I don't remember economic development specifically as a council. Yeah, go ahead.
I think the committee advisor, committee representative with that, would find anyone to speak to, to the committee, and I believe all the part of the presentation to council.
Yeah, but there's no direction taken. Yeah. I'm going to ask you to keep your questions till the lease.
Okay. Yeah, and I just started thinking about uses and helping to understand what are the best uses, because it sounds like, you know, I think in the presentation, we saw a couple of ways where this might be consistent for OCP. But when I take a step back and look at the overall fitness of the OCP, this seems grossly inconsistent. I mean, I think our community is very focused on climate change, tourism, environmentals, and these sorts of things, and this seems to be quite overall contrary to that. And it seems that, you know, while we could take some possible risk and make some hopes or guesses about how the other businesses there evolve, this will effectively really constrain them. And so I'm wondering how we balance that and are we really paying attention to the OCP? And just related to that...
And that's something council would consider as, when the lease, details of the lease actually comes forward, comes forward, so.
And relate to the use of the dock, I understand that the Oil and Gas Commission was basically, was recently asking for public feedback on floating storage, and we got the notice too late to comment on that. That seems to include some recommendations, although it's not very clear, about a fairly large exclusion zone. And so if we do this dock and enable this project to go forward more easily, do we make a whole, but a large portion of how sound is unavailable because there's now an exclusion zone?
It wouldn't be a part of this lease or this area?
No, but I guess I'll be enabling that, is my question.
I don't know the answer to that question, but it wouldn't be something we would have in this location.
The exclusion zone only has to do with the energy facilities, it's got nothing to do with boats or vessels traveling to it.
That's not the CSA setting.
Or the fueling of those boats to go back and forth? Yeah, that would be part. It's not part of this area, though. And so the exclusion zone would not be in this lease area? Like, we would not have...
No, I'm just trying to avoid looking at things as piecemeal, sort of, if we do this, the big picture has this impact, and it seems like it's a piece of a puzzle of big picture, cutting off access to part of the sound, which concerns me a bit. So, just closing here. Yeah, I guess that is, that's my main question for council one, is making sure that, given the overall set of values in our OCP, is this really consistent with the competing objectives we have?
Yeah, the OCP is an interesting document because if it competes with the actual land use, then it's in conflict. If it, a lot of things support some policies, so if it doesn't with other policies, the OCP in and of itself is a contradictory document, and so it's an individual analysis of that, essentially. But from a land use point of view, it does technically, according to staff, conflict with the actual land use that's in the OCP or in the zone. Otherwise, we have a zoning application for this.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm talking more in terms of the values in the OCP as opposed to the specific policies.
Thanks. I saw one where Hannah was... Susan? No, you didn't tell me. Okay, I didn't see that. So then, the next phase, Neil, is you will discuss with the proponent, details of this for council to consider?
Yeah, I think what we're looking for today is a direction to continue to explore this situation, and we've got lots of feedback from council here today on different areas of interest and things that they see considered as this thing, process goes forward, including things like bringing the province into the discussion around Darryl Bay and that area. So if council so chooses, we would can just continue to work along through this process with WLG, and cut back to council at a later date with some feedback and analysis.
I would definitely like a conversation with Crown Land about the forshore offices there related to if a ramp is something that we're taking on, and if it's compatible with its uses, even during the four years. For the ferry dock, yeah, the whole area. Any other ques...
Well, to the whole area, I mean, that's something that deserves, you know, like, there's just so many questions in that whole area going on there. It's hard to just isolate one and ask that. When council already talked about, how's your plan for that area? That's what I think we need for that area.
Are you suggesting we stop this process to do a master plan?
This is a four-year lease, but when we start going, oh, well, maybe we put the lease in there, maybe we'll get a boat ramp over there, you know, that might be good for this, and that, you know, like now we're going, who's going to park here? And those guys want to buy that up there? And so, okay, that's, you with the lease, and get into a planning process with the next council, and do this, you know, and say, okay, what's going to happen up there?
Yes, we've had those conversations about that overall gateway vision there. One more question over here, and we're way over time, so...
Yeah, I'll make one. My name's Matt Black, and I'm sure we've heard all that happens. I guess just given the Kinder Morgan and the controversial nature of this project, if there were protests, say, like the Kinder Morgan, what sort of contingencies could we take to guarantee the safety of everyone involved, and what does that, you know, look like? Is that something that council would consider?
Question for the police, suspected none for council.
So there'd be no special considerations then?
Well, I think that's why they're implementing some security measures at their site among also their day-to-day security, safety issues.
But that would only be on their property. They would only secure that as far as all the other properties concerned.
Yeah, and that could be considered part of the lease if we, if we think that's an area of concern, but...
Because we know that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We understand. Okay. Do you need a motion from council? And I just want to clarify, this is not approval of this in any means. This is just, we want to, or we want to see details of what this might look like, and council deliberations and the community's input will proceed from here.
It could be as simple as council direct staff to explore...
Continue to work with it.
Yeah, just explore a lease or scenario based on the presentation presented by WLG today.
Someone want to move that? By Council Ray, said by Council Prior. Any discussion at this point? Call a question, all those in favor, opposed, Council Elliot, Ken, opposed, motion carries. All right. Apologies to our next delegation. We went a little over time there, a little over time. Next up, we have Chris Hill. We first, come on up, Chris. I think Devin's gone, but hopefully we don't. Actually, just have a seat. I'd like some...
We'd like to look at you instead of behind you.
Unfortunately, the first time you were here, there was some confusion about the number that was presented to council. I think the intention was, we wanted a number of... Can we ask people to just move outside to speak? Thank you. That the intention was to have multiple evenings, the number council got to approve was just for one, and so...
Yeah, it just got missed. You guys had a long day. It was a miscommunication, unfortunately, but, yeah, I am asking for eight dates. I want to clarify the fact that I'm not hogging the stage by any means or not considering other people or organizations. Essentially, what I am doing is picking up the scraps. There are markets already booked by Bianca as well as other community groups, and I'm just picking up the leftover dates, essentially. And I am essentially proposing to offer a free day in the park music for the community, so.
And so, just clarification, Christine, we had already done a grant aid for three and four for one day, and so we're asked to be considered seven additional grant aid waving up the fees, essentially.
Apparently Robin would like speaks to this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Heitzman. Robin Arthur, General Manager, Corporate Services. So yes, apologies to council, the request that came in was one date when aid had been requested. The total amount is 32, 27, 68. And just to clarify, there is only one date being requested in July and one date in August. The bulk are actually on the shoulder months, three in June and three in September. So the rest, it's not...
Not the peak of summer.
Right, when the parks are already booked.
Yeah, it's in the record.
Yeah, it's, I can give you the dates if you don't...
Yeah, it's in the record.
Okay.
Susan, question?
Yeah, my concern is, you know, having some dates, I really like the idea of a community day for music. It's a great idea. My concern is having other people come in and, I mean, for June, it's already, I'm happy to consider June for sure because it's pretty immediate. But September, I worry about other groups losing bookings. Would you be willing to work or have it in a contract that you would be willing to show the stage or work with other components if other people want to use the stage during that time? Or is it going to be specifically...
It's only from 1 till 4 in the afternoon. It's not like I'm using it all day or night.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's so, such a small window of time, and I just figured that it picked that time because it's kind of like in the afternoon, after lunch, and before dinner. And it'll bring a lot of people into the downtown core, right? As well as, you know, add some excitement and hopefully some money will come through.
Any other questions from council? I will move forward the recommendation that we do the grant aid for seven additional subjects. You seconded, seven by Susan? Any more discussion? I'll call a question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries, thanks for your patience. Sorry, I lost track of time.
No problem.
I was going to interrupt it at 3:00 and I probably forgot.
It's been a little journey so far, so it's all good. I've had half hours and everything.
Music in part?
Yeah. And just for the record, like, this is going to be an exclusive, sorry, inclusive experience because I'm bringing in local artists and, you know, other business owners and so forth, so.
You've got a couple of council members that...
Play music? Awesome. And I do want to, you know, appeal to a wide demographic of music, too, so if people that you know...
We just make other people look really good, so.
Please do.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Motion to close, moved by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Ray. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries.